Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call us to order for the City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll, please? Present?
Present. Here. Present.
Here.
Present.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Councilmember Ross, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any changes?
Do we need to add the voting procedure for Deputy Mayor?
We do need to add the election of the Deputy Mayor, yes. Okay, so we have an amended agenda with the--
I'll move to do that.
Okay, thank you. Need a second? Okay, it's been seconded. And can we check that prior to-- Can we check that prior to public comment? Since that should be fairly quick. Okay. So then, all those in favor of the agenda as amended-- or actually, I think we need to approve adding the election of the Deputy Mayor first. So, all those in favor of adding the election of the Deputy Mayor, we'll plug that in next, actually. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. By vote of 7-0, we will amend the agenda to add the election of the Deputy Mayor. Do we need to approve the entire agenda now that it's amended?
As amended.
Yep, okay. So now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Move.
Okay, it's been moved twice. So we'll call that a second. All those in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by vote of 7-0, the agenda as amended is approved. So next, we will have the election of the Deputy Mayor. Melanie gave you all the voting procedures for that, so right now, I will ask for nominations. And just for the public's edification, everyone else's, we'll go in order in which they are nominated. So, let's see. Councilmember-- Oh, Hornish, sorry.
Before I nominate, I want to try to get a general read or maybe a consensus that I think I served through-- when were you appointed? May, April? No, probably May, because I started work in April. So you've only served how many months? Six and a half, basically. So I wondered if there's an option of nominating Councilmember Moran for Deputy Mayor, even though typically you have one year of service, but she didn't have a full year.
Any reason that you can't--
There was a precedent once. Before, it was you switched every year, but then Kathy Huckabee once stayed and had two terms as Deputy Mayor.
Okay. That would go towards-- well, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Moran, then, with that in mind. To continue in-- continue learning on the job, so to speak.
Councilmember Ross.
I was gonna make the same nomination, Deputy Moran.
Councilmember Stewart.
I would like to nominate Councilmember Valderra.
And Councilmember Ritchie.
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Stewart.
Member Hornish, your light is on again.
Sorry.
Oh, okay.
I'm new to this. It's a new year.
All right, very good. So we'll go in order in which the nominations came. So we have the current Deputy Mayor, Karen Moran. All those in favor, it might be helpful to see hands, I think. All those in favor of Karen Moran, say aye and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Six. Okay, by vote of 6-1, our Deputy Mayor will continue to be Karen Moran. Congratulations. No relocation required. Okay. Next, we will have a public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit per person or five minutes if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 PM at the end of business day to City Clerk Melanie Anderson at manderson@smamish.us. Please be aware that council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. First, I have James Eastman, followed by Rick Paul.
I'm trying to get ready for this public hearing. I'm actually not gonna be here, so I'll probably submit something in writing and talk to it, but I'm trying to get a few answers on this V over C. And up on the screen is the zone map for Smamish, all the different traffic zones. If I understand that right, each one of these zones allocates trips to other zones throughout the entire city. So, there's a couple hundred zones. Does it just take 0.01% of a trip going on Suhali Way to trip concurrency on Suhali Way between 4:00, 5:00, or 7:00 and 9:00, or whatever the hours are, to fail a development even-- no matter where it is on that entire map? Assuming small portions of trips are gonna be allocated there, no matter what. So, I'm assuming this is gonna be a blanket moratorium over the entire city due to this V over C. So I'd encourage the council to kind of look into the results of that. And if it is a blanket moratorium, I'm also wondering-- you know, I have my property and live on East Lake Smamish Parkway, which is a continual highway of cars. I was looking forward to getting to the TMP to try to maybe take on some potential projects that could fix some of that. But if we're exempting it, and if it's gonna be a five- or six-year moratorium, I'm thinking maybe we figure out a way to do some safety improvements along there, especially people turning out onto it or Camden Road. There's a few other intersections on there that have failed concurrency in the past, but don't show up on concurrency anymore due to the fact that they fell. So, it would be nice if we're gonna take the bullet now and say, "No more development across the entire city" due to the fact that each one of these zones puts a trip on Suhali Way during a certain hour, that we go ahead and we include some improvements on East Lake Smamish Parkway, and we bite the bullet, especially for people like me who, you know, I might wanna develop, but I can't because Suhali Way fails. Well, I'm on East Lake Smamish Parkway, which we're not even measuring, and shouldn't my money-- or shouldn't people's money be going there to at least improve it some? So anyways, just something to think about. Hopefully, I've put in emails to Public Works, Public Records requests. I wanna know how these trips are broken down and how a concurrency test is done, and whether or not it is what I think it is, where per those 200 zones, or however many they are, there'll be at least one trip, or 0.01 of a whole neighborhood, which might be just one trip that will fail the entire neighborhood, no matter where it is in the city. So, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
May we ask a question at this point, or is that not in order?
Yes, if you wanna-- real quick, sure.
Hey, James. Question about where you live on East Lake Smamish Parkway and how concurrency failure on Suhali Way affects you. So I'm trying to understand-- I think we all are-- how that--
Well, I don't know. I've asked to see-- I said, "Here are my four zones that I have land in. Do any of them put trips up on Suhali Way?" And I'm thinking, maybe they might, because they might say, "Oh, this-- one guy in that neighborhood they're gonna build is probably gonna go drop his kid off at school and then go to work during the peak hours," right?
Make sure I understand. So are you saying that if a vehicle on-- that is-- you develop on East Lake Smamish Parkway, and if you can demonstrate that no vehicles from that development go onto Suhali Way, even if it is a failure, you should be able to develop? Or does that failure in that on Suhali Way put a blanket moratorium on any development in the city, full stop, period?
That's what I'm here to ask, because I wanna provide public comment after having that question answered.
Okay. Cool.
So I wanna know, you know, how is concurrency gonna be measured with this peak hour, with the volume capacity? Because depending on how they allocate those trips-- or the trips-- it could fail concurrency even if it's one guy in a far-out neighborhood. I have land where the only way for me to access my land is go through Redmond first, and not even go to the city of Smamish. But I'm sure if I go-- once I get my Public Records request, there's probably trips allocated back within the city, which would fail me on concurrency, even though I'm not even going to-- I'm going to Redmond first. So--
Good question. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Next, I have Rick Paul. Okay, very good. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we will go ahead and close public comment. Next, I would need a motion for the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by vote of 7-0, the consent calendar has passed. Next, we will move to new business, and we have the interviews for the Arts Commission and Human Services Commission applicants. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor. There we go. Madam Mayor, and members of the council, you have a list of the candidates for both the Arts Commission and the Human Services Commission. Those-- my understanding is those are broken down by what they listed as their primary committee they wish to serve on. And you do have mention under those names who indicated a secondary committee they would consider if you so chose to do so. I believe-- are all of these folks here this evening?
I don't know that.
Do we know where they're at?
Well, if there's anybody here currently that's here for the interviews, if you could step into the hallway, that would be great. And I did not hear from all of the applicants for the Human Services-- Clara Delshed from the Arts Commission is going to interview next week. She had a conflict tonight. We've had, as you can see on the list, a couple people who have withdrawn their name from consideration. So I will go and see who is back there.
And I assume we'll take those in order that they're listed here?
It's probably-- that's fine.
You may need that. Sometimes paper comes in handy. And we did forward the three questions to each of the candidates, so-- Might have to re-ask those, but--
I suppose we don't have to necessarily ask them. I thought they were going to answer them in advance. I thought that was-- and that we'd ask other questions--
I got my wires crossed on that one.
Okay, that's okay. Hi there.
Hi.
Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself?
Okay.
And then just give us a little bit of background, and then we'll ask a few questions.
Okay, sure. So my name is-- Okay, sorry. My name is Priti Joshi, and I'm living in Shamami, Syria since 2006. And I'm serving in art commissions for five years. And I am organizing Bollywood dance event for last three years. And last year, it was so successful, that event. I'm a little bit nervous, so--
That's okay. That's okay.
Yeah. And last year, some council members showed up, and they-- I mean, they are all so happy, and all the people from that event who ever participated, all so happy. And that's it. And I have my two daughters and husband.
Very good. Okay, so I will open it up to council to ask a few questions. So, anyone would like to ask a question? So they were given those. I think we can ask those three questions, or if you'd like to ask something different, I think it's fine, too. We don't-- I think we talked-- I talked to Larry. I think there was some confusion on the questions. We thought they were going to answer them in advance, and then we could ask here. But I think-- if you have this question-- I don't have those questions in front of me to ask, so if you do, someone must pull them up. Or I think you can just ask questions.
There you go.
There you-- that's fine, too.
Yes, thank you. Gotta keep pushing the button. Next question would be, could you tell us what specifically attracts your interest to serving on this committee?
I love this committee, because I would like to make a difference in our community and bring up all the events and everything.
Okay, and the third question I'd like to ask, is there any specific actions you would like to see this committee take-- or take up for consideration during your tenure on this committee?
Sorry, can you repeat again, please?
Yes. Are there any specific actions that you'd like to see the committee take up for consideration if you were to be selected for this committee during your tenure?
I don't think so.
Are there any additional questions that council would like to ask? Councilmember Ritchie, sorry.
Thank you. Hey there. Have you been to any of the meetings-- the commission meetings thus far, to see how things go?
Any meeting?
Yes.
She's on the commission?
I understand. I'm asking from like outside of the other commissions, like beyond the Arts Commission. I'm talking about like planning commissions and the Arts-- beyond the Arts Commission.
I didn't apply for that.
I mean, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, have you seen how other commissions perform? And what I'm asking-- let me put it this way. You've been on the Arts Commission. My question is, have you seen how other commissions perform? Have you been to those commissions? And what's your feeling on how it's going? Is it progressive? Is it going well?
Yeah.
Making progress? Are things getting done? And have you-- if you've been to other meetings, or other commissions, or this council, these meetings, or other meetings outside of city government? Have you seen or learned other things that you might wanna add in? And are you able to do that? And what are those?
Now, I don't have an idea about-- I mean, I'm a little bit--
That's okay. No, I'm just curious. But you feel like you can-- you have a voice there, and things are able to get done?
Yeah.
And, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't see any other questions. Thank you so much for coming in this evening and interviewing with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay, if you'd like to. Thank you. Up here. To the podium, yes. Front and center. No, we're not timing you. Don't worry. So if you can just introduce yourself to us, give us a little bit of background, and then we'll ask a few questions.
Of course, thank you. Hello, my name is Lazarus Chernick. I've been an advertising creative director for most of my career, about 20 years. I'm the judge of international art competition based in Hollywood, California. My wife is a famous artist, and she'll be standing up here in a little while. I'm also been-- I've also been an instructor for commercial art for a long time. I've been a part of the gallery scene, managing my wife's fine art career. And I have a longstanding passion for all the arts performance as well. And a couple years ago, I got the bug to give back. So that's why I joined the art competition in Hollywood, and why I've been writing books and articles and joining websites. And that's really why I'm here, to join the team and, you know, support the arts and art community.
Very good.
Couple of questions for you. I think you might have just touched on this, but could you explain your specific interest for why you wanna serve on this committee?
Well, I'll be honest. I'm not certain exactly what the committee does, to the specifics. But I know that with my particular background in art appreciation and art management, that I have the skills necessary to be able to contribute to the community's understanding, appreciation, and building of the art community here. I don't have any particular personal financial interest in what's going on. My own art has nothing to do with it. My wife's art has nothing to do with it. I just wanna focus my current giving back. My mother was a Rotary member many years ago. She was also a public servant. And she sort of raised me with an interest in it. And now I finally have a chance to do it with my career.
Thirdly, what specific action, if any, would you like to see this committee take up if you were to be appointed during your tenure?
I think I wanna support others on the committee and learn what exactly is-- is the city going with it? What they're going to be doing? What their plans are? And contribute to the best of my ability. My career as a creative director is I'm project-oriented. Understand what the project is, what the needs are, and then help, as a team, come up with the best solution and help it get executed.
Okay, thank you.
Are there additional questions? I have one. There are two different term lengths available for commissioners. One is a two-year, and the other is four-year. Do you have a preference?
I don't have a preference. It might be best for a two-year for right now. I have young children in school right now. One's at Eastlake, and one's at Renaissance. And maybe four years from now, my younger daughter will be graduating. But between now and then, I don't know what's gonna happen.
Very good. Deputy Mayor Moran.
So, given your daughter's at Renaissance, obviously, this follows through the family. So given that your wife apparently has applied as well, is there gonna be a conflict if one is picked over the other?
First of all, no. That-- we've been supporting each other. We met at art school in New York City, and we've been supporting our careers side by side for this entire time. In fact, 12 years ago-- was it 12? No, 11 years ago, that I was a creative director of an ad agency in Fort Lauderdale and was getting burned out in the corporate world. And she said, "Quit, come work for me." So I went and I worked for her. So I'm working for her already. And I support her. And part of my job is to promote her fine art career, which has nothing to do with anything the city would be involved in. And so, we already work together very well. And if you are trying to decide between the two of us, I'll just say, "Go with her."
Thank you for applying. I sub up at Renaissance, so I'm sure I'll see you up there.
Thank you.
I don't see any more questions up here. Thank you very much for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, if you'd like, so--
I don't wanna make you nervous.
So, Echo, what we're doing here is just-- thank you. So if you'll just introduce yourself to us, and then give a little bit of background, and then we'll ask a few questions.
Absolutely. My name's Echo Chernick, and I'm an advertising art nouveau illustrator. I've been doing that for 25 years. We moved to Smamish about four years ago. I'm also the coordinating judge for The Illustrators of the Future. This is in Los Angeles, and that's a lifetime appointment. And-- and I've been doing fine art painting the last couple of years as well. Questions?
Yes.
Yes, I have a couple of questions for you. If you could explain your specific interest in wishing to serve on this committee?
Of course. When I became the coordinating judge a couple years ago for The Illustrators of the Future, and it gave me the opportunity to start working with a lot of students who are aspiring illustrators and really giving back to the community. And I've been enjoying it greatly. And I'd like to-- you know, living in Smamish, somebody posted up that there was openings on the committee. And I thought, you know, that might be a better way to-- a good way to become more involved with the committee and to learn about the arts more locally as well.
If you are selected for this committee, are there any specific actions you would like to see the committee consider during your tenure?
Well, I'd like to see what the committee is already doing, of course, first. I'm specifically interested-- I like working with students and with upcoming artists. When I was an upcoming artist and student, the Arts Committee there wasn't very supportive of students. So I'd like to be more supportive of the youth that like to look into careers as artists, as well as maybe-- it was brought up to me as well that some local artists would like to have a space to show their art in Smamish. So that might be something worth looking into.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there questions? I'll ask the same question I asked before.
Okay.
We have two different term lengths. There is a two-year and a four-year term. Do you have a preference?
I intend to be in Smamish for at least the next five years until my kids graduate school, so I don't have a preference.
Okay. Very good. Are there any other questions?
Come on, Karen, you gotta ask the same question.
There she goes.
And that was my husband, I think, before me. We worked together in the studio, so--
Well, one, I'm gonna accolade for choosing Renaissance, because that's perfect for moving that along in the family. And I'm gonna ask you the same question I asked your husband. Is it gonna cause any sort of marital chaos if one is chosen over the other?
No, absolutely not. So, we-- like I said, we work together all the time. I'm an advertising illustrator, and he's a creative director. And he has to put up with me being in the spotlight some days and him in the other-- some other days. So whichever one fits better for the committee better. He has different experiences than I do in terms of leadership and management and such. We make a good team, but we also would continue to support each other individually as well.
Very good. Echo, thank you. I don't see any more questions up here. Yes, you're welcome to stay, if you'd like, and listen.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. So, we'll have you come up here to the podium. Just introduce yourself to us, give us a little bit of background, and then we'll ask a few questions.
Okay. Hi, I'm Ashley Arrington. I live at, do you need to know where I live at? 220th Place Northeast. I'm a stay-at-home mom of three little kids, and we recently moved to Sammamish. Everyone's loving it. It's fabulous. It's great. A little bit about my history is that we moved to the area from Amsterdam. I've also lived in Italy and Florida. So, along with my worldly exposure, I also have actual experience doing an art commission because I did it when I lived in Florida, and I loved it so much. But I had to quit when we moved to Amsterdam. What? I know, I know, I know. It's a hard life.
So, we have a few questions, and I'll turn that over to our city manager.
I have two questions for you. If you could explain any specific, what your specific interest is in wishing to serve on this committee?
Okay, well, I guess I've always been taught that it's extremely important to be involved in the community in which you live in, and we intend on making Sammamish our forever home. So, it's really, really important for me to be involved in the city. And I love the arts. I've been immersed in it my whole life. I have a degree in it. And I just think this is sort of like the perfect fit for me and the best place for me to start my involvement in Sammamish.
Okay.
And it'd be lovely to be part of something that positively influences the community through art.
Okay. If you are selected for this committee, is there any specific actions you would like to see the committee take up during your tenure?
I think the committee is doing a pretty good job, but maybe we could try to just have art everywhere. On the old art commission I was on previously, we had a sculpture walk, and we would get artists to lend us their work, and we had it all over town. It was on corners of streets, in the median. And by doing this, you just expose a lot of people to art that wouldn't normally get to experience it. And another thing I'd really like to see happen is maybe a children's art festival? It'd be a great way to bring the community together as one instead of the divide between school districts. You could also be even more inclusive and have a sensory art station, which would allow children with special needs to participate in the art, but in their own way and being able to handle it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions from the council? Okay, I'll ask my same question again. There are two different term lengths available. One is a two-year term and the other is four-year. Do you have a preference?
I do not have a preference.
Okay.
Anything that you would allow me to serve on, I would be grateful to serve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay in the audience, if you'd like.
I have three little kids.
I totally understand. Fair enough. So, right up here to our podium. Don't be intimidated, we don't bite.
I was not expecting this.
Okay, so we'll have you just introduce yourself to us, give us a little bit of background, and then we'll ask a few questions.
Okay, so my name is Sarvinder Marwaja, and we have recently moved to Sammamish and trying to get used to all those great, wonderful things here, high-speed wind including. And, yeah, and we have decided we're never going to go out on vacation when it is the wind season because you never know what kind of things you may see when you come back. So, anyway, we just came back yesterday night, technically today morning. And, yeah, so I had two lives. One was before kids, after kids. The before kids, I used to be a project manager and a program manager and all that kind of thing, did that for a long time. Kids happened. We realized that we don't want to live a rushed life. We do not want it to raise them like that. So, I stopped working. I started working on my own. I was a photographer for many years at my own leisure, doing things, and did it for quite some time, and then we had to move from Texas to here, so I had to shut down my business. And now I am doing my other outlets to let my creativity channelize in those because I have to have some outlet for the creativity. That's where I am. And I think I did a good job with the kids. Both of them are alive, they're kicking, and they're doing good.
I have two questions for you. The first is, if you could explain to us why you're interested in serving on this committee?
Okay, it's very, very simple. One line answer is a pure passion for art. Today's world, including my kids, I do not know. We still have to understand, like, how much is here, but I have seen it here also. There is so much stress on the STEM, just the science and, and of course, you know, means over here, I probably it's going to be more, given that it's all like, you know, the technology and all that stuff. And I think the art piece is kind of, is always, is overlooked, neglected somewhat, which is so very important. So, my idea was to join this thing, to bring that where we can include more and more involvement from the kids also in this whole program, where they understand that how important the art is. Any form of art is so very important. It is not just like you're doing some drawing or something. It include, like, it's so much mentally opens you up, and there are studies to prove that. So many long research, which have multi-year research, but nobody like seems like, okay, STEM, everybody is after STEM. So, that's what kind of like, being myself a science student, my husband is an engineering background, and when I see him pushing kids for the STEM and science and all, it kind of like doesn't sound very nice. And I think most of the parents are doing that because there is a lot of resources with school which are for STEM, very few resources for art. Anything happens, budget cut, first thing goes off, arts. You know, first thing you take out, oh, we have not many art teachers, let's get rid of them. So, that's where my passion is, that let's have a community which supports children involvement in the art. And with that involvement, we have parents also, we have that kind of outreach where we telling them, explaining them how art is also equally important to create a balanced human being.
Good.
You don't want just a, you know, worker writing down coding or whatever, no offense to any programmers here.
Well, you've kind of touched on this, but let me ask, is there any, if you're selected to serve on this commission, is there any specific actions you would like to see the committee consider during your tenure?
What action? I will be like more kind of like, let's outreach to the, you know, to the general community here, involve them, have some more art competition, or let's say art in the park where we invite students and the kids and all those people and do some kind of art competition over there and make it more exciting for the community, where you just bring your art supplies and we'll probably, maybe we'll give you paper, or you bring your own papers, where we don't have to have like a lot of, you know, it doesn't have to be very costly effort. Just come to the park, do your thing, we'll give you a theme on the, you know, at the, at that moment, and you just paint something for half an hour, maybe, and just submit your thing. Just a nice way to bring the community together. There, if you can involve some artists, the local artist can serve as a judge to select those arts. It'll be just a like multi-fold, you know, where everybody's coming together. People also getting to know that, oh, there are so many artists in our own community. How can we kind of like, you know, have some talk also where they tell them, you don't have to be an artist, you don't have to be an artist just to appreciate the art. Maybe art appreciation, you know, some kind of a session for, just to appreciate the art.
Good, thank you.
One more quick question, unless other council members have one. There are two different term lengths available. There's two and four-year terms. Do you have a preference?
I think we're going to stay here. I'm not going to move. So, yeah, two or four, whatever, you know, if, it means, I will rather say that whatever you think is right, and maybe if you think like two years and then you see that, okay, am I really being a contributing, you know, to the overall committee, then keep me. Otherwise, let's give chance to someone else.
Very good. Are there any other questions from council? Councilmember Valdroma.
No, not for after she leaves.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Wow. Thank you so much for coming in this evening. You're welcome to stay and listen to the comment. In fact, you probably should stay.
I'm asking about the curators. Traditionally, the council has always, the one who has the most votes gets the four-year slots. Are we looking at changing that this year?
I don't know. The reason I, the reason I'm asking the question, because there's two different, if somebody has, you know, can't commit to four years, for whatever reason, I would want to know that, so. And I don't know what the current commissioners, where they're at. I mean, I don't know if those are four years and we have one two-year, that's an unexpired term that someone left. I wasn't sure, so that's, I just asked the question just.
That's the one that's traditionally been done, and if they leave two years, that's the real point for the balance of those two years. So, that's why I'm asking, are we going to change the procedure? Or should we still go with the one who gets the most votes, gets the four years? So, it's down there.
Okay, sorry.
Hello.
So, what we're going to have you do is just introduce yourself to us, give a little bit of background, and then we'll ask a few questions afterwards.
Great. So, I'm Nushina Amir. I've been living in the Sammamish area for the last seven years. I work as a senior program officer at the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and I have two teenage daughters who study at Skyline.
I have two questions for you. If you could first explain why you are interested in serving on this commission?
Great. So, I have over 20 years of experience, technical experience as well as practical experience in working in human service organizations, and I also have experience in funding human service organizations. My technical experience comes from my academic background. I have a master's in social work, and I completed my PhD in social welfare from University of Pennsylvania. And early in my career, I acquired a lot of practical experience in working in human service organizations. I worked at organizations that provided services to orthopedically challenged children, to victims of child sexual abuse. I worked at a shelter in Texas that provided services to victims of domestic violence. So, I have practical experience in some of the areas that have been identified as priority areas under the needs assessment, especially mental wellness, domestic violence, cultural inclusion. I also worked as a faculty member at University of Maryland after completing my PhD, and I supervised MSW students in their field placements. And that was just an excellent opportunity to interface with many local community-based organizations and human service organizations and understand their concerns, their perspectives, their priorities. So, I bring that experience along with experience working in private foundations. Over the last 13 years, I've worked at two different national private foundations. I worked for five years at the Lumina Foundation for Education in Indianapolis that provides funding to programs to improve college access and success for low-income first-generation students. And over the last seven years, I've been working at the Gates Foundation, and we work globally as well as in the US on a number of different issue areas, including preventing family homelessness, improving educational opportunities for low-income students, and a number of health issues. So, I think that I'll bring a 360-degree view of having like that frontline experience working in human service organizations and also bringing the funder's lens of, you know, providing strategic funding to human service organizations.
Okay. If you are selected to serve on this commission, is there any specific actions you would like to see them take during your tenure?
So, I did serve on the Human Service Commission over the last year, and one of the things that I have really emphasized is being much more strategic in how we think about human services in Sammamish and in funding human services in Sammamish. In the past, I think a large number of, many small grants were provided to a large number of organizations, which prevents you from really understanding what was the impact of those grants. Because if you, you know, if you have a number of really small grants provided to a large number of organizations, that doesn't really help you to go deep and have greater impact. So, one of the things that I have emphasized during my tenure over the last year is to be much more strategic and to think about some longer-term goals for the next five years. And based on those longer-term goals, develop a really evidence-based, strong strategic plan, and also do an assessment of, does the city have the capacity to deliver on that strategic plan? And also have some sort of a monitoring system in place to track progress on whether the goals that have been established are being achieved or not. So, I think being much more systematic and strategic can really help to strengthen human services in Sammamish. And I think the city has made a big leap in the right direction by forming the Human Services Commission in the first place because it provides an opportunity to have those strategic conversations.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. Hi. I'm asking questions of folks that have served on this commission before, you know, incumbents. So, have you been to, you have a lot of private industry experience, remember when you spoke about the Gates Foundation before? Have you sat in on this council meeting, other committees or, you know, commissions or your private business experience and how those groups operate? Have you been able to, are you able to take some of the things that you've learned that work on the councils or commissions that you've seen or served on and to bring them to the Human Services Commission? And also, have you seen some things that don't work? Are you able to get things done? Do you feel like your voice is heard on the commission?
Yes, I do think that my voice is heard, and I feel that we had a fairly diverse commission last year, which was, which added a lot of value to the discussions we had because people came from very different backgrounds and perspectives and brought experiences from different sectors. So, that really led to really robust discussions, and, you know, we often agreed to disagree. So, it wasn't as though we agreed on everything. We had really robust discussions, which I felt was really helpful because it helped to elevate our work, it helped to elevate the recommendations that we provided. So, definitely, I always try to chime in and voice my opinions where I feel that, you know, I have a very specific point of view and I can add value.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any more questions, so thank you very much for your time this evening and coming. You're welcome to stay and listen, if you'd like to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll just have you come up to the podium and introduce yourself to us, give us a little bit of background, and then we'll ask a few questions.
Okay. Good morning, good afternoon, or good evening. I'm Jodi Nishioka. I've been on the Human Services Commission for the last year, this first year of the commission. I'm an attorney and I am an executive director of a nonprofit. My background has been in human services for all, most of my career. My legal career started working with immigrant women and families in domestic violence and other immigration issues. And then I moved in to do mostly working in the areas of women and children, at-risk youth, at nonprofits and in city governments. So, I was a planner at the Human Services Department in, at the city of Seattle for eight years. I was also a planner in the state of Hawaii in the Human Services Department as well. So, I have a fair amount of experience, over 20 years of experience working in human services, both from the government side, doing things like, very similar to the city of Sammamish, Human Services Commission and staff, giving out grants and designing grant programs from the government side, but then also on the other side, on the nonprofit side, writing grants, doing program planning, budget, and then consulting with nonprofits who also do the same. And now I lead my own nonprofit, or not my own profit, a nonprofit. So, that's just, I've been in, I've been in the resident of Sammamish for 20 years. I had three kids. One's a senior at a high school at Eastlake, the other two are in college. And, yeah, that's generally my background.
I have two questions for you. If you could first give the council an explanation of your interest in serving on this commission?
Yeah, so I've been, as you can tell from my work experience, I've been in human services for many years, and it's really what I'm interested in doing. I like working in community, with community, on issues around families, women's issues, children. So, that's what I've been doing, that's my interest, and that's what I've been doing with my career. I've been in city government, so I feel like I have something to offer, both from the nonprofit and the city government side. I've also been on the commission for this first year of the commission, and I do feel, I asked for a one-year term when I was appointed last year, and I reapplied again. I'd like another one-year term. I feel like we're in sort of a two-year, biannual cycle. So, this first cycle, we did, spent most of the time giving out the first round of grants, and now we're going through the strategic plan and trying to figure out strategically where we want to go for the next few years. And I, there's a lot of camaraderie on our commission, and we've been working together for the last year, and I just feel like the work's not quite done. I'd like to stay on for the sort of a full two-year cycle so that I can go through that whole process with my fellow commissioners.
I think you've touched on this, but if you're reappointed to this commission, is there any specific action you would like to see the commission take during your tenure?
I, you know, the study, the study that was commissioned by the city really showed a real need in several areas, but particularly in youth and mental health for youth. I think that's a big issue that bore out in the study, but I see in my own personal life with the high schoolers and a lot of pressure. So, I'd like to continue the focus that we've had on the commission on youth and mental health. I'm particularly interested in domestic violence, although the, it is something that was in the study, that came, bore out in the study, but we don't see a lot of numbers. It's not necessarily because there isn't a lot of domestic, there isn't domestic violence happening in our community as it is in every community. It's that probably people aren't reporting. And I have a lot of background working with domestic violence survivors, and so I am particularly interested in that as well. Also interested in seniors and what our services, I think that our community is maturing, and so there's a great need to look at that. I'm also dealing with that in my personal life as I get older, but also with parents. And I see it playing, the issues that seniors have played out in my own family experience as well, so that's also an particular interest.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Hey there. Asking a similar question to those who are incumbents.
Sure. Sure.
You mentioned that you served on other commissions or at least sat in on other meetings maybe in the private industry, but have you sat in on some of our council meetings or maybe the Planning Commission or?
Yeah, so in, I was on the commission last, this past year, the Human Services Commission, and we participated in joint meetings with the Planning Commission. And so I've done it that way. I've been in commission, council meetings, not necessarily here in Samamish, although I think I've been to one. And in other types of public council-type places, both in terms of staffing as well as a community participant.
Do you feel like your voice is heard? Do you feel like you guys are making progress?
In the commission, I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I feel like we got a lot of work done this year. I think that we really dug into the grant-making process, spent a lot of good time, having a lot of discussion. I think our commission is really diverse in terms of our experience and our interests. So I feel like it's, we address all the issues, all of the areas of interest around human services get touched upon because we have a diverse group and everybody brings their own perspective. So I do feel like we made a good progress in figuring out a good process in how to give out the grants and how to process the large number of requests and figuring out a budget and working with the council, proposing to the council as well. So I do feel like we got a lot of work done. I feel like the voices of the commissioners, because they're diverse, represent a large diversity within our community, and that's been effective in carrying out, hearing those voices. Also, folks coming to talk to the commission as well. We've heard from folks coming to testify toward, to us. So I feel like we've heard from voices in the community. I feel like we represent voices in the community, and I feel like we had a really good, effective process.
Thank you.
I have one additional question. Jodi, you mentioned that you wanted to serve another year. The term is four years. Are you willing to serve a four-year term?
It's four years?
It is.
Wow, that's a long time.
Tell us about it.
Are all the positions for you, is it just these two positions that are open are four years?
It is. So I think what we did originally, I think all commission terms are for four years, but because the Human Services Commission was brand-new, we had to stagger everybody so that everybody wouldn't turn over at once. And so there were one, two, I think, three and four-year terms that we did. And so I think, I remember you asking for a one-year term. I was really, I was like, oh, she came back, great.
Yeah.
So, but I just want to be sure that you're, you know, that you're willing to commit to that four years or if you have some hesitation.
I have some hesitation just because four years just seems so long, like where will we be in four years from now? But I will be in this community for four years. I'm committed to being in the community for four years. We're not planning on moving. So as long as I'm in the committee, community and the commission still wants me, I will be prepared to fulfill that commitment.
Very good. My light box is out. I don't see any more questions. Jodi, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. You're welcome to stay and listen if you'd like.
And I have a question. What's the process? What's your time?
So the council has additional interviews to do. I think we'll do all of the voting, so there's several different commissions that we'll do appointments to. And I think we will do all of those appointments on a singular evening, and is that in two weeks?
Twenty seconds?
Next week. You interview again Monday, and then we have a council meeting on Tuesday.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good evening.
We'll have you come up to the podium here, introduce yourself to us, maybe give a little bit of background on yourself, and then we'll ask a few questions.
Very good. Thank you. I'm Bill Patterson. I live in Brookshire East, 4641 to 43rd Court, southeast in Samamish. Fairly new to the city of Samamish, but between the unincorporated area, King County, and the city of Samamish, we've lived in that area for 26 years. But in that 26 years, I witnessed a lot of accelerated growth and cultural diversity of the area. I'm one year into retirement after a 47-year career in the food service distribution industry. The past 11 years commuting between Seattle and Chicago in a senior management role with a large regional food service distributor. In having a Bachelor of Arts degree in education, I volunteered for some nonprofits in the Chicago area, one of them being Child Serve, and which tutored culturally diverse children needing to improve their English and their reading skills. And then also volunteered for a region-wide resource for disadvantaged called the Chicago Food Authority. And with that, I have, I do have an interest to want to serve in a volunteer capacity and be a resource to the city and certainly have the time and the wherewithal to be able to do that. So with that, if you have questions, I'll open the floor to you.
Very good.
I have a couple of questions for you. I should say, first of all, that I don't have a vote, but I like your last name.
Thank you.
If you, if you could give the council a feel for what your interest is in serving on this commission?
Well, from the standpoint of human services, it certainly is a diverse area. And from the standpoint of, I'm sure that the city council would give the commission its marching orders in regards to the areas that it would want to, it would want that commission to explore. I think with my background in industry, somewhat a little bit of education, although I never, I graduated in education, never pursued it, but I have always been involved in that aspect with our districts. And from the standpoint of really having empathy for my fellow man in regards to wanting to reach out and help where help is needed, I'd certainly enjoy that opportunity.
Okay. If you are appointed to this commission, is there any specific actions you would like to see them take up during your tenure?
You know, I have no, really, areas of focus. I think from the standpoint that you, as the city council, certainly have areas that you would want us to focus on and the priorities, I assume, would be established by yourselves for that commission to explore and come up with some recommendations. So, no, I personally do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council members? Sure. Deputy Mayor, sorry.
Sorry about those bears.
Well, I'm even more sorry about our Seahawks.
And she's a Packers fan, by the way.
Oh.
Well, I said sorry.
So I don't see any questions up here.
Very good.
We thank you very much for your time this evening. You're welcome to stay in the audience, listen if you'd like.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that, and good luck in your search.
Thank you. We'll have you come up to the podium here, introduce yourself to us, give a little bit of a background, and then we'll ask a few questions.
Thank you. My name is Ahmed Khan. I'm a software engineer and living in Samamish for the last 14 years, just behind the Skyline High School. And I love to live in Samamish for the next coming years as well.
Very good.
I have two questions for you. If you could first explain to the council your interest in serving on this commission?
Yeah, I have a passion in my life, you know, by default to serving others. So this is one of my hobbies. And from example, one is when I moved in 2004, I felt one of the key issue, the ethnicity that I belongs to in 2004. And eventually, we have established the SMA on 20th Street. Maybe some of you guys was there as well, right? So we are serving for last couple of years almost 250 families in children education, then, you know, outreach for, you know, food for needy, then, you know, street cleaning. These are the human service-oriented. And we have some other religious educational programs as well, number one. Number two, I am part of the, providing some, you know, legal assistance to our community members in some cases. And number two. Number three, you know, I involve for international projects as well, like, you know, building houses for the poor, for example, giving wedding opportunity for poor girls, so those kind of. So I did number of those things, like human service orientation, oriented things. And I'm living here for 14 years, and I thought maybe formally be part of the city as well to provide our, you know, extended community of the Samamish areas as well.
Okay. Secondly, if you are appointed to this commission, is there any specific actions you would like to see them take during your tenure?
Yeah, I have a couple of them. And so if I make some priority, I think number one is I'll try to create an opportunity for our inhabitants here on the, you know, coding and digital marketing areas where the big need is today. You know, the industry is facing a lot of issues on skills stuff, right? In the coding for youths, adults, and then also digital marketing, you know, technical part. So I'll try to help and facilitate our community members so that they can get some good quality jobs. Number two, I might think about like, you know, providing legal assistance to our, you know, families who are struggling with a lot of issues that I know personally some of them. So those things that I can, you know, facilitate. Number three, I think, you know, I'm a sportsman playing badminton, and I feel really not enough things that we have in Samamish. I used to go to the, you know, Bellevue for the last 10 years. I play every Sunday. And those, right now, we rented in YMCA, you cannot believe it, 20, 20, 30 people that play every two, three days in Samamish badminton, that we built the infrastructure, I mean, the culture to play, put that away, right? So we rented, I think YMCA rented CWA, and, you know, it was not really a professional environment to play, but we are playing there almost today. There's a player today as well. So those kind of things that I'll try to, you know, facilitate or coordinate or, you know, come up with suggestions and stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council? Okay. I don't see any. We really appreciate your time this evening. You're welcome to stay and listen if you'd like, but thank you so much for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
We'll have you come up to the podium here. Just give us your name and give us a little bit of background about you, and then we'll ask a few questions.
Okay. My name is Jamie, and I am a four-year resident of Samamish, so moved here fairly recently, but hoping to become more involved in the city and, you know, at the very least volunteer my time. I went to law school down in California, so I have a JD, but I've never practiced. I'm working right now as a recruiter, doing some legal recruiting. So that's my basic snapshot, if you will.
Very good.
Okay. I have two questions for you. If you could first explain to the council your interest in serving on this commission?
So my interest in serving in the commission, I would say, public outreach. Like I said, I want to become more involved in Samamish and just get to know the city and at the, at the very least volunteer. But I would say the public outreach component is interesting to me.
Okay. If you are selected for this commission, is there any specific actions you would like to see them take during your tenure?
I would say probably, again, reaching out to the residents to see what they, what they would like to do and then take steps on maybe the most popular things, surveys, those types of items. I briefly looked at the needs assessment, so any things that need to be completed or outstanding, volunteer my time with those matters and also grant writing, grant research, and the like.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions from council members? Okay. Not seeing any. Thank you very much for coming in this evening and for your time. You are welcome to stay if you'd like, but we appreciate your time this evening.
Okay. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. I think we got through them all. Yes, Melanie? Very good.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, absolutely. Councilmember Hornish.
Melanie Thomas Thompson for the Art Commission was, did not, was that somebody else that's coming up on next week or?
No.
That's a, okay.
I just told him that he was getting surgery, and I wasn't sure.
Okay. Are we going to, if he's, if he had dental surgery, are we going to offer him to come in? Okay, perfect.
All right. That's what I wanted to confirm. Okay.
Okay. Very good. So our next item of business, updating the city council committee charters. Mr. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is fairly simple action. This updates your committee charters, and as you see, basically, it's taking out the membership names on it so those don't become dated and you don't have to go through this process every year. You might want to consider if there's any of these committees that you don't need at this time, be time to go through that, or if there's any that you need to add to any of this, I suppose, would be also the issue, so.
Councilmember Ross.
I like that approach. I'd recommend, if you have the names, put three council members, just say the words three.
Say the words three council members?
We can do that.
And then, and then staff, say like city manager, public works director, whatever the title or the role is. So keep it role-specific, not name-specific, so you get a context of who participates in each of those.
Okay.
Councilmember Hornish.
So along the lines of stepping back and thinking about, do we need these committees or should we have others? For the first question, do we need all these committees? Do we have an idea of how many times they met throughout the year?
We, I could dig that up for you. Didn't Rob bring that?
Hopefully people on the committee would be able to tell us, right?
Sir, the Public Safety meets quarterly traditionally, so we probably meet four to five times a year, depending, we met a little bit more because of the safety report.
Okay.
The quarterly.
Okay. What about the ad-hocs?
Well, the Communications Committee stopped meeting because we didn't have any communications staff to meet with. But I think that now that we will have new staff, I think that that is something that would be good to do, especially.
Yeah, I think we met twice.
Yeah. Yeah, we met earlier in the year and then there was no one to meet with.
The legislative, though, actually has met fairly frequently.
Monthly.
And then we have every two-week calls as well that are taking place. So that's actually become more of a standing committee.
I would agree, and that may be a good reason to move it to a standing committee now that we have lobbyists, because we need to probably have more touch points.
I would go for that.
What about governance? I mean, governance was active early in the year, but then kind of tailored off, right?
Yeah, I want to say we had maybe one or two meetings.
We got into a spat.
Well, we didn't get any done, frankly.
Well, they did a proposal, it got shot down, and then I think everything.
We didn't, we didn't, yeah. I don't know that we had other subjects.
I'm not on that committee.
Governance.
That was governance.
Okay. I'm going to go back to the lights here.
Okay, I'm going to go back to the lights here.
Councilmember Hornish, are you done?
What about Utility District Coordination? How many times did that?
They did not meet, but I think, we had this discussion in the agenda meeting that I think that one still needs to remain, because those issues may surface this year, and so having a committee available would be helpful.
I would concur with that.
Okay. So I just throw it out there, do we want to keep the Governance Committee if it's not meeting and not doing anything? I would propose we do away with that one.
The Governance Committee.
Myself, Pam, and Tom.
You three would know better.
I think if it's an ad hoc committee, it will meet as needed, so I don't know that we do or don't need it, but it's there if needed.
I would say if it's going to stay, the charter needs to be modified a bit, because I think it overlaps too much with the Communications Committee.
Yeah, and I think we had that exact conversation.
So, I think that if we're going to keep it, we need to make it a little more clear so there isn't overlap.
Want to combine it?
Yeah, I mean, that's another possibility. It could be the Communications/Governance Committee, is it possible? Or you prefer to keep them separate?
I said that. I didn't say either way.
Okay. Just asking.
I'm throwing options out, yeah. Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. I would support keeping the Communications Committee, the Governance Committee, and the Utilities District Committee as ad hoc committees. I'd support moving the Legislative Committee to a standing committee, given our new commitment and investment into a lobbying firm to help us work with the state government more effectively. I think that committee has actually run pretty well, and I think working with our lobbyists and making sure we have people either by phone or Skype or in attendance at those phone calls, I think, has been valuable. I think that there's a need for Communications Committee. I don't really know what the Governance Committee is supposed to do short of what I've read on here, so I'd be interested to see that that, in my mind at least, there's some opportunity for us to do a better job working with ourselves and how we operate as a council, and how we govern ourselves, and how we can maybe create better policies and more robust policies, and how we can, frankly, if we're not for Councilmember Valderrama's history lessons up here, I think we would have forgotten a lot of the traditions that we have in the past, and frankly, I think we need to move traditions into more policy and document some of these things so we're not rewriting history. We're a 20-year-old city, and I think that could be something that Governance Committee could start to establish, how these things come up. Let's start to document and make these things more real or more robust over time. So I do think it has value, but I do think it is different than the Communications Committee. But I think they all have value, but I definitely support moving Legislative Committee up, especially during session. And again, the investment we made into lobbyists, I think that means we should move that up to a standing committee. Thank you.
Councilmember Ross.
Well, I agree with everything Councilmember Ritchie just spoke to. Just for clarification, the lobbyists are participating in the legislative? That's excellent.
Okay. I don't have any more lights on. Yep, Councilmember Hornish.
Okay. I'm going to be right up front, and I know I am not serving on any committees or very few committees at this point. However, we have in our general council meeting rules and procedures that if you miss so many meetings, you can actually be looked at to not continue on with council. I was wondering if we would want to incorporate that into these committee meetings, but the ad-hocs meet so seldom, that's probably not really relevant, but it might be relevant for the standing committees that if somebody misses, and I think our rule is if you miss three council meetings in a row, you can be removed by the council? Is that right?
That's actually state law.
That's state law? Okay.
I was going to say, we had looked at that before, but state law precludes it or precedes it, so there was no reason to put it into.
Well, then I guess I would ask you, would that be relevant to put into a committee charter as well?
We have an issue.
We haven't had an issue, nor would it, it would still be superseded by state law, so.
You can still do it? Okay, fair enough. I'll retract it. That's fair. That's a good point.
Yes, we've had a few issues.
I'm not sure, since I'm not involved.
It's not the committees, it's actually council meetings.
Okay. Councilmember Ross. Oh, your light's just on.
Do I need a second, Jason's motion?
I don't think he made a formal motion, but we need one to adopt.
Do we need one?
I think we need a motion to adopt.
No, we wanted to move the legislative up to a standing committee.
All right. Jason?
I'll go ahead and make the formal.
I would second it, then.
All right, good.
Move that we move the Governance Committee up to a standing committee sta, yeah, Legislative Committee. Excuse me. Legislative Committee up to a standing committee status.
I second.
Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of moving the Legislative Committee to a standing committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0, we will move Legislative Committee up. And then I think we probably need to adopt.
I would like to move that we adjust the charter of the Governance Committee. It can stay as an ad hoc, but I think it needs to focus more on process and procedures and not communications so that there's no overlap.
Second.
Second? Okay, we got a second. There we go. Okay. Any discussion? Councilmember Ross. Okay. Okay, Councilmember Stewart? Or no, sorry, Councilmember Hornish.
I'd like to know what specifics changes would be made, or do we want to bring it back for approval separately later on as amended?
That's fine. It just, right now, it talks specifically about communications, and I think that's where the confusion comes in, so.
Councilmember Ritchie.
I kind of thought that's what the purpose was, the motion was to clarify the role of the Governance Committee versus what seems to be some bleed over into the Governance Committee, including communications, which should be the subject of a separate committee. And further, I thought part of the motion was, or the wording of the motion, to me, illustrates that there should be process-building, policy, not policy, but processes, and how we go about operating as a governing body. And that's what I thought the Governance Committee was supposed to be, and I thought that's what the purpose was of the motion, to delineate out or to focus on that. And frankly, I think that would be up to the Governance Committee to come up with that, what that is. And that's, I don't want to sit here and say you have to do X, Y, and Z. As our body, I think from a policy perspective, we're trying to establish a certain number of us to say, meet ad hoc, come up with some policies, bring them up, let's talk about them on the committee as a whole, and see what we come up with as far as how to make our operations more smooth.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
So I guess I will amend my motion to say that we table the Governance Committee approval until it can be, the charter can be amended.
Okay, we'll have that back to you next time.
Do you want to, do you want us to then have a resolution for all of it when it's amended? Or do you want us to move forward with what you have less the?
Let's go with what we have less the governance. Let's move forward.
I can do it either way. It's really whatever you're comfortable with. If you want to, if you feel comfortable with the others or if you want us to put it all together.
I think it's fine. I don't think it's.
Okay. We can turn these around pretty quick to you, so.
You're making a single motion wrapping everything in. Are we going to pull in suggesting, or does the council concur that we put roles in the charters, not names, but roles?
I think that's.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you want to?
Well, that was pretty much what the point of the motion, of the resolution was to begin with, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think he was just trying to remove the names from it.
Well, no, that was the point of the resolution, was to remove the names.
Yeah, taking names out, you're putting three counselors and whatever staff are there designated would be the folks, yeah. I can get this messed up next time, you'll vote it down.
Councilmember Hornish.
Well, I just want to try to be clear then. So I move that we approve all of the charters but for the Governance Committee for a later time by amending what's proposed, by adding the positions, not the names, for all the charters for both staff and council members.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Councilmember, oh, no. Is that a yes or no? Nope. Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, seeing none, then all those in favor of?
Sorry. We have an amended motion now that's been, we have a motion that's been amended twice, right? One is to move the Legislative Committee up, and one is Councilmember Hornish's motion. So we're, both those have now?
The amendment would be attached then to his motion, because we passed the amendment to move Legislative Committee up to a standing committee, so his motion would have that amendment to it, everything except for governance, which would come back later. Did I get that all right?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. So then, all those in favor of the resolution as amended, minus the Governance Committee? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0, we have passed that resolution.
See, the safety value you have is, you've got Mr. Sugg here who corrects everything I screw up, and so he knows how to straighten this stuff up.
Helpless, so he takes vacations.
We don't let him.
It's not in his contract.
Okay, so, before I move to item 17, because there's kind of a council report slash committee, council committee reports, and this resolution tucked under there, does anyone have a council report? I have a few things, but I want to make sure that anybody else doesn't have something that needs to be addressed. Councilmember Ritchie?
I just have a point of order. Are we placing, I remember there was an email that went out about placements of folks on committees. There is an Eastside Transportation.
Exactly. That's where I was going to go with a couple of things. Yep.
That's on your report?
So, that's why I said before we jumped to item 17, I have a couple of things, and that's one of them, is to figure out if we need to vote on a few of these committees that are going to come up in January right now.
Okay.
Should we just do them and get them done?
It's not even 8 o'clock.
I don't know that we have.
Let's just do them.
I mean, we certainly can.
Because meetings are going to start happening, so if we drag it on, we're just going to.
Well, usually people shift around a little bit on the committees that we serve on, so yeah, there's usually changes. I think every year we kind of move around a little bit. Well, I don't know.
I would support getting committees filled as soon as possible if there are going to be any changes, and moving forward with that, you know, there's no reason not to, given the time, given our schedule that we've got coming up, we're here. Something else, is there any other reason why not?
Well, it's only 7:52, so we better take advantage of the fact that we have time right now.
Right.
Okay, all right. So then, I will start off at the top of that, I'm just using that list that we just went through. So we have the Finance Committee, and now I'm not going to be able to scroll back and forth. I don't know who's currently serving on that.
Chris, Jason, and Pam.
Who would like to serve on it?
I'd like to continue. Chris, Jason, and Pam.
But is there, is there anyone else that wants to serve on it before we move on?
No, just the leftists.
Okay.
We'll bring you over to the dark side.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Okay, and then next, we have the Public Safety Committee, which is currently Chris, Karen, and Romero. So, I wouldn't mind being on that committee.
I want to stay on that.
Now it gets good.
It's, I, my person, the only reason that I would want to, I would want to move off one of the current committees that I'm on, because I think it's good to move around and get experience throughout the different committees that we all have to serve on. So, anyway.
But traditionally, the mayor doesn't have to be on a committee, they can sit in on any committee.
Well, any of us can go to any committee meeting, because they're all open to the public.
That's correct. Traditionally, that has been the way that we've done it with Jaren and the others, as they were then attending the different ones, but not formally on a committee or heading a committee.
So I don't have to be on any committees?
No. No, but he never was the head of a committee, because he was never on a committee officially, so he never was the head of a committee.
He was always on the, well, so traditionally, we always had the mayor and the deputy mayor and one other council member on the Legislative Committee. So Don would have, or whoever was the mayor would have served on.
But that was for a different reason that actually does not apply now.
Okay, Councilmember Ross.
Okay. In my opinion, those that are plugged into Eastside Fire should be on the Public Safety Committee. So that's Romero and Karen. And since you're showing an interest, Mayor, I'll defer to you, so you'll be the third person.
Okay. Unless, does it make more sense then to do Eastside Fire and Rescue first and then circle back to public safety if we want to marry that up?
If, yeah, might as well do it that order.
Okay.
But that, my recommendation is they, those two, those two positions, they usually have two positions, Eastside Fire should be on the Public Safety, stay plugged.
I think that makes sense. Yep. Okay, so then, do you want to do, so we can do Eastside Fire and Rescue certainly first? I think currently we have Councilmember Valderrama, who's serving, Deputy Mayor Moran, and who is, Chris, are you the alternate?
I'm the alternate.
Chris is currently the alternate, and FAC? Karen? Are you the FAC? Okay. So there's kind of that, so I think the requirement, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Valderrama, somebody who's serving on the board also needs to be FAC.
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. Okay. Those interested in serving on Eastside Fire and Rescue? Okay, so the same folks?
Same three.
Is anyone else interested in serving?
They're interested.
No? Okay, I thought there was conversation down there. Okay, so that's easy, but we just need to figure out who is serving on the board and who the alternate is. Does anyone have a preference for?
I have a preference to stay on the board, since I'm going to ask to be vice chair again, it's the first time we've ever had a leadership role in our city's history on that.
Well, you were this year, though, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, continue. Councilmember Ross.
So, for clarification, Romero holds a different director role?
He's elected, so Eastside Fire and Rescue next month will hold elections for their leadership, so their chair and vice chair. So he's currently serving as vice chair for Eastside Fire and Rescue. The board will vote again this coming February for who their leadership is.
I hate to say this, but perhaps we defer Public Safety and Eastside Fire till that election is held, so we see how the dust settles.
Well, but whoever we elect for Eastside Fire and Rescue Board, I mean, I don't know that that necessarily will impact.
Whether he gets vice chair or not, he'll still be serving.
He'll still be on, yes.
We still have two positions if we don't have an elected chair?
Yeah. Yes, yes, absolutely. And the only pitch that I would make to any other council members who might be interested in Eastside Fire and Rescue is that that's obviously a really big deal for the city, and getting on that board just to learn, and of course, anybody can go, but I think it's good, because it's a big deal for the city, so.
Well, and that's one of the ones where they really like to continue us.
They do, but considering that terms end and council members go, and it's good to have institutional knowledge throughout. So that's why I just say if anybody else is interested, or go to those meetings.
So, I mean, I'm perfectly fine trying to create a win-win-win, is, it sounds like if the rest of the council's accepting the three of us on the Eastside, me being alternate and the two board members, and as far as public safety, I will attend but not be a member to stay informed as much as I can.
Sorry.
By the way, you would be a member of.
Oh, I see. Oh, okay, I'm tracking what you're saying.
So I'd be an alternate on Eastside Fires, with the recommendation, and then I would not be a member of Public Safety, because I'm not a prime member, and I would just stay informed, either in contact with the members or attend myself as a, you know, open meeting.
Okay. That works. Everyone good? Do we need to formally vote on these? Or do you want me to bring it back as one vote for all of it?
Yes.
Do that. Do it all at the end.
Okay, so then we need our FAC person. Karen, are you going to continue as FAC?
Thank you.
Good night. Or, it's one of the two of you for FAC, so who's doing it?
It's one of us, and we can split it as well, because I usually end up going early, because we try to put our agenda meetings back-to-back anyway, so.
Great, then I'll let the two of you work it out.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just scribbling down everything.
So-
Okay, so then, let's circle back to the Public Safety Committee. Chris, you said you're willing to forego that committee, is that, okay, so I'd be interested in serving on that one. Is anyone else also? I know you two already said you're-
I'm on it.
Public Safety.
We want to stay on Public Safety.
Is there anyone else that's interested?
Go for it.
Okay, all right. We're good there, Public Safety. Okay, then we have Communications Committee, which is currently Chris, myself, and Pam.
Legislative.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I just, I'm, I'll go, I'll get there, sorry. I just, I jumped there, just because I was looking at this list, I apologize. Let's just, it's okay, let's just do Communications, I'll circle back on that legislative one, sorry.
Would like to stay on that.
Okay. Pam wants to stay on Communications, does anyone else?
I do.
Pardon?
I'm on it, I'll stay on it.
Okay. Chris? Anyone else want to be on Communications Committee?
Know who's on it?
Chris, myself, and Pam.
You don't want to get in the middle of that.
Okay, I can, I can certainly, I can stay on there.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Governance is currently myself, Pam, and Tom. Anyone else interested in the Governance Committee?
Are you going to stay on that?
I'd like to peel off one of the committees, since I'm going over to Public Safety, so if someone else is interested in Governance, that might be good.
Well, I'm, I'm very interested if it's addressing policy and conduct and how we optimize organization.
That's what it should be.
Yeah. Then I would-
But we have to rewrite that still.
Yeah, if that's where we're going with the rewrite, yeah, absolutely, I'd be interested.
Okay, and Karen, you said you're interested as well?
Yeah, but Chris is interested.
Chris, you, we're good? Okay.
Okay.
Legislative Committee, currently, it's myself, Councilmember Ritchie, and Councilmember Valderrama.
I'd like to continue to serve on Legislative Committee.
Okay.
I would like to continue to serve on that.
Okay. Is anyone else interested in serving on that committee?
I am.
Okay, Pam? So, I think, we had this conversation in the agenda meeting, and I think I'd bring it up to the council. Traditionally, the Legislative Committee has been the mayor, the deputy mayor, and one other council member. I don't know that that is technically all that relevant, especially with a lobbyist. So, we have a lobbyist in place, and technically, any of us can go down to, I think that the draw for Legislative Committee was going down to AWC, Action Days, but technically, any of us can go down, all, you know, only the committee members, more than three, can't meet with legislators, but I don't know, I wanted to ask the council, I don't feel like it needs to be the mayor and deputy mayor, so.
I feel well-served with this committee.
Uh, Councilmember Valderrama?
I was going to bring up a couple of points of history. Historically, originally, it had been the deputy mayor, they were traditionally the more senior members. Back about, I guess about five years ago, we broke that because of political issues that, one of those, we were no longer looking at that, and we were trying to see who had the better access to the legislators. Now, obviously, we have lobbyists, but that is still one of the issues, is that you want the Legislative Committee to still have the ones who have more access to legislators, just for logic's sake, so, for what that's worth.
Okay, I'm, like I said, I don't see that it needs to be necessarily the mayor and the deputy mayor on that committee, so I'm happy to roll off that one. Pam, if you would like to be on that.
Happy to.
Okay, so, and then we have the Utility District Coordination Committee, which is currently Councilmember Ritchie, Deputy Mayor Moran, and Councilmember Valderrama. I'm happy to pick up a role on, on that one.
Happy to roll off, it's all yours.
Happy to roll off, all right. Karen, you still interested? Romero?
Yes, because it's never met, it hasn't burdened us much.
Okay.
Tom, you could even say it.
I'm waiting for the hotline to pick up.
Okay.
Okay, that was funny.
That was probably, okay, so then, we also have to do, we need a PIC alternate?
Go there.
So, last year, that was Pam, and we need a PIC alternate. So, that's a good committee, I think-
I'd have to stay if nobody else wants it, but.
I was going to say, I think it's a good committee, just for exposure on the more regional stuff, so, is anyone else interested in, you don't have to go, unless I, unless I can't go, but you can always go, but technically, anybody can go, so. Pam, I think you're it again.
If, if no one else wants it, I'll stay.
The PIC alternate, Public Issues Committee, sorry.
Oh.
Are you interested?
But if you're interested, I'm happy to let someone else.
Okay, okay, all right. Good?
Yep.
Pam, good?
Absolutely.
Okay. That was painless. I think we're done. Did I miss anything?
Yes.
What?
Are we just, are we going to move on outside, external committees now, or?
Oh, we used, so we have ETP?
Yep.
See, that's, oh, yes, and Cocony Work Group. Okay. And Jason, you're currently serving ETP, don't we have two ETP?
We have Chris and I, yeah.
Okay.
Happy to keep doing unless you want to step in, you tell me. 7:30 Bellevue School District, every once a, a couple times a quarter.
Where else I'd be happy to back you up?
So, are we remaining?
Same, okay. Okay, Cocony Work Group, I don't even know who's currently-
I'm backup.
Okay.
But he doesn't really need backup. I said it's you, and then I'm supposed to be your backup.
Alternate, okay.
I'm still interested in that.
Okay. Karen, you still interested in being, and I, are those public meetings? I think technically, anybody can go, yeah?
Yeah, well, I see a lot of-
Are they?
Don Jaren's there, and-
Well, Don Jaren's not on the council.
Doesn't King County announce it?
I don't know, that's why I'm asking if it's a public meeting or not.
We're, we're, I see a lot of people that are-
That's what I'm saying, I think it's publicly announced by King County.
Okay, okay. All right, so we're keeping that the same. So, Chris and Karen, you're the alternate.
And then we've got Riot 8.
Thank you.
Riot 8.
Who's on it, I don't even, who's-
Jason and I.
Okay. You guys want to continue on with that, or?
Riot 8.
I'll be honest, I have not been able to attend a meeting, just scheduling-wise, so I would rather not be on a meeting, that just scheduling-wise, I cannot make, reliably.
Yes, I mean, that makes sense.
I don't want to be that guy.
It's only a quarter.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm happy to stay, I've been attending, so.
Can you say a little bit about that?
Do we?
It's, it's the, it's, it's basically, the Riot 8 is the whole basin thing, and so it's really dealing with salmon, and to some extent, the Cocony, and how do we protect the watershed, and different things like that, so.
I mean, they need quarterly, during the day, nighttime?
It's, yeah, it's like 3:00 in the afternoon, I think, once a quarter.
And where do they meet at?
It moves around, it sometimes is Mercer Island, sometimes it's Kirkland.
Eastside.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. So, Pam and Karen?
Do you want to be the alternate during Karen?
Okay. We also have Arch. And you were serving on Arch, I think I took that from you, but I didn't see anything about any meetings, so I don't even know how often they meet, unless that information was never conveyed to Arch, because I never heard anything.
I haven't heard anything about it, it's usually the city manager and me who attends on behalf, have you heard anything about Arch meetings?
Arch?
Arch, the Regional Coalition for Housing.
For Housing, yeah.
Jeff Thomas has been-
He's been going on behalf of Sammamish. Should we have a council member?
We should have a council member, it's just if we're not aware-
I haven't been aware of it.
Jeff's coming up to the podium here.
Who, me? You used to have the city manager and the, or the head of finance attend that. You still?
Hi, good evening, council. I've been serving on the Arch Executive Board in lieu of the city manager for the past several months, and am scheduled to do so, I believe, through about mid-year until the new city manager is hired. I haven't heard anything about the group, Councilmember Hornish, that you're referring to, but we have a meeting this Thursday, actually, so I'd be happy to inquire about that. The elected officials, I think, normally meet a couple times a year.
Yeah, typically, it was like two times a year.
Yeah. So, I've not heard anything about an upcoming meeting for the elected officials, but I'll be happy to, to raise that on Thursday.
So, I think we just haven't had any.
Okay, maybe that's why I didn't hear anything.
It would probably be best, because my, given my schedule, I probably won't be able to attend if and when it comes up, so if somebody would like to step in on that.
Well, I, technically, I did when you stepped off committees, but I just didn't hear anything, so either there weren't any meetings, or they weren't aware that I was then representing Sammamish. I'm, I'm happy to, if somebody else has an interest for Arch, otherwise, I can stay on it. Does anyone else have an interest for serving there?
It's a good program, you learn a lot about the region, frankly.
So, who's on it? Tom's on it now.
No, 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 no.
I'm on it, there just weren't any meetings, so I haven't attended any meetings, so I'm happy to stay on, but I-
If you're, if you're looking for one member, is there?
It's one.
Alternate.
I'm looking, I might be an alternate, because I'm in the Joint Recommendations Committee, which has a lot of tie in.
Overtime, okay. Okay.
All right.
Did I get everything that everyone is serving on? External, uh, council, oh, sorry, I thought you just pushed your thing, nope, okay. We get them all? We think?
I think we do.
Okay, so then, can I, do you want me to read them through, everyone's comfortable with it, and just make a motion? Okay. You don't have to be recognized to make a motion, go for it.
Move it out.
Second.
Hey, it's been moved in second, and any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the committee, as we had previously discussed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of 7-0, we have set our 2019 City Council Committees.
Yeah.
Before we move yet over to your city manager report, I did send the PIC packet, and I just wanted to be sure to ask if anyone had any feedback related to the agenda items on that.
You had a question about an appointment, and I was-
So, there is, and I'm going to struggle to pull up the PIC packet, if you need me to, I can. So, typically, it, let me find it, hold on.
Oh, yeah.
This was another, I think it was another-
KCD, it was KCD.
I think it was KCD, yeah.
Yeah.
There we go.
Isn't that the one where we had said we wanted to vote for Mary Lou?
No, 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 that's the Sound Cities, that's Sound Cities Board.
Got it, okay.
SCA Board. So, there, it's a KCD appointment, so King County, King Conservation District, so I think, formerly, I think Jason was an alternate for that last year, and then, so, I don't have a name to give to you, that's just kind of how PIC works, they meet before, and then they bring it forward. PIC doesn't solidify this, it goes back to the board.
So, it's your ask of us, you kind of made it like it was an ask, so was there an ask?
No, well, I mean, I hate to, I don't like voting down at PIC without at least letting you know that there'll be an action item, so that's an action item for the, for the PIC meeting. So, I just, that was more making you aware.
Do they do their flood district stuff?
Do they do their flood district stuff? There's a lot of discussion, and I can, some of which came up today, had the North End Mayor's Meeting earlier today down in Issaquah, which was great, and Karen, maybe you can give us a little bit of an overview, too, of the, the meeting you attended this morning, because that was a big discussion point. So, there was the, I think it was through the Bellevue Chamber, right? They had a lot of the mayors, and they had legislators present, so it was a vibrant discussion later today at the North End Mayor's Meeting about some of the discussion there, relative to, I think, where most of the discussion landed, and correct me if I'm wrong, since I was not present, but just relaying what happened at the North End Mayor's Meeting, a lot of discussion surrounding transit, who's going to pay for that, and the minimum urban density that has been proposed. There was a lot of pushback from cities on that, because they don't, the cities don't want to be told what they have to do, so, and we had a lively discussion at the North End Mayor's Meeting, to that end as well. The King County Parks Levy, which is on the PIC agenda for discussion tomorrow night, was also a topic at the North End Mayor's Meeting, and that will be coming up, there's, there was some talk today about whether there'll be an additional ask from jurisdictions, potentially for a regional pool, like pool as in swimming pool. Bellevue, if you're not aware, is investigating whether or not they want to put in a pool there, and they are talking facilities similar to Weyerhauser and Federal Way, so big aquatic center, and Bellevue's looking, you know, versus, going at it alone versus making it more of a regional thing, and if it becomes a regional thing, there may be an ask out to jurisdictions, if they want to throw in a center, too, towards a regional facility, so. Councilmember Valderrama?
Two, well, question and a comment. First one, you said a bill that has been proposed, is it proposed or will be proposed?
I think it will be proposed. It's been proposed in the past.
I know that people are looking at that, and I just wanted to make sure it hasn't yet been proposed.
Yeah, I think it was in the, I think you're aware, I think it was in the legislature last year, and well, it's-
That's correct, but this is a little bit of a different, that's not-
It is, it's changed from-
To go through. I just wanted to make sure that I hadn't missed something that had been proposed already. The second part, as the pool goes through, just to give a historical context to some of our council members, the community center that we have here with the Y has land and space available. At one time, the school districts had wanted to have a pool in our city, and we said, well, okay, you guys can fund it, and what we were willing to do is have space available to expand that building, if they wanted to split it between them and the other organizations, because they kept coming to us and saying that it's necessary, but they didn't want to put any money on, and that's a loss leader, those pools. So, just so that you're aware, that there is space designated, if the schools ever were to step up, and the original concept of the council, back then, when it was approved, was that they would split it half and half, or between them and some of these rec clubs for our city, and they've never wanted to put a cent into it, to date.
One other thing that I thought was interesting that came up at the North End Mayor's Meeting, most of you are probably aware, the Issaquas, city council voted to preserve the Cougar Mountain, that was the organization, and last night at their council meeting, they set up, they being the city council, set up the ability for residents to contribute specifically to the conservation of that land, so it's an $11 million purchase for the city, and the city has set up something, they cannot advertise it, apparently, but they have set up something where people can contribute to it, and basically help offset the cost for the city. So, I thought that was interesting, as far as land acquisition goes, because I know that's of interest in Sammamish, so. Anyway, okay, I think that was, Councilmember Ritchie?
I said, additional, are we doing councilman reports still, or are we?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think if you, if you have stuff that, yep, please. Yep, please.
Just wanted to add one thing. We're, I feel like we're lucky to have Central Washington University's campus, one of our camp, one of its campuses in our city. And the mayor, the governor has boards and commissions. I've served on one, and I'm serving on one in King County now, but the Central Washington University Board Trustees has an open position. It's for the general public, and whether or not it's a council member or a member of the community at large, I think it'd be great to have some Smamish representation to go along with our Smamish campus on that board and commission. And if anybody's interested, I have the link, it's available at the governor's, the website, the governor's office under Boards and Commissions. Pretty straightforward application process. You don't have to live in Smamish, but I don't know of anyone that lives in Smamish that serves on that board. So I think it would be great to have our voice on that board and our representation in Central Washington University's Board Trustees.
Sure, that's, that's good information. I was gonna say, I wonder if the city might not be able to put that out, Mr. City Manager, just so our residents are aware. I wonder if there may be a conflict of interest with a City Council member serving on that, only because we have a contract with them. Yeah.
Are the meetings in Ellensburg?
Well, but I think if, you know, if we put it out there for Smamish residents, it's maybe somebody in the community. That'd be great. Okay, Councilmember Stewart, do you have a report? And Councilmember Ross, sorry, do you have anything? Councilmember Hornish? Deputy Mayor?
I just want to talk a little bit about this meeting this morning. It was with legislatures and different council mayors and deputy mayors and that sort of stuff from the area. It was actually a very interesting meeting. The legislators that were there spoke a lot and took a lot of complaints from people that, from the audience that were complaining about how the growth was being allocated. That, and it wasn't even coming from the cities. The cities were kind of agreeing with it, that it was being put in the wrong places. And it wasn't being put in, Kenmore is very similar to Smamish, where they're, they're not in a good place to take growth. They can't, they're not in a good place to be able to take the growth and have it, where they're, they don't have the access in the places where they can, you know, we don't have the roads to, as we were explaining, we don't have the highways around us, the state highway and stuff like that around us, where we have the access to get our people out of here, and they're kind of in the same spot. So that was very interesting. We started talking about, you know, some places are able to take a lot of the denser housing, because that is what their city does, and that's what their city has versus some of the other cities, that that is not what their city is made of. And so it was about having the legislature know that some cities wanna, are okay with that, and should be able to build more and more of that, and some cities don't want that and should be able to stay like that. So there was those discussions that took place. There was discussions about, of course, the cost of the roads. And then I brought up the fact that, you know, the legislature, they have many avenues open to them for ways to pay for things. And cities have a very small list of ways to pay for things. And so it would be, you know, better if they didn't take and use our ways, when they were funding things. And so they kind of listened to that, and we had a discussion on that. And so there were, it was actually a very good meeting. It was a lot of back and forth between what they had going on. They were talking about the different ways of having to fund 405 and whether or not we should be using tolls on the city and that sort of thing. But it is something that they do annually, and so now that I know the format a little bit better, next year we should be very prepared with a lot of, a lot of good questions for them, because it's, it's a great format.
Thank you. Councilmember Valdorama?
Well, I wanted to wish everybody a Happy New Year. Merry Christmas for the Eastern Orthodox, the Epiphany just passed as well for that. And then I'm very happy his army ended in the top 20 this year, so I want to spread that out, because it'll maybe a long time before we see that again, so.
Good, okay. I think we can move to our next agenda item finally. Sorry, City Manager's Report.
I have four items for you this evening. First, I want to talk about your meeting on February the.
12th.
12th. I know that you're looking at the AWC Conference, I believe it is.
With the legislators.
And so I want to see if we want to hold that meeting on the 12th, or whether that, whether you want to cancel that particular meeting. If we do, I need to schedule one for the 11th, because we do have, I think it's the interim development regs that we need to conduct some business on, and well, we'll have some other items that we'll probably deal with as well. So if we can have the meeting on the 12th, we'll go ahead and leave that. If, if not, I would ask you that we at least hold a meeting on the 11th. So that's really whatever works for your calendars. I don't know what your schedules are in terms of attending that conference, so.
So the, here, I have it right up in front of me. So it doesn't start until the 13th?
Starts on the 13th.
And it starts at 9:15 on the 13th. Last year I drove down that morning, so I think we could have the meeting on the 12th. I don't know how heavy that agenda is, but I, you know, I don't know if we want to move a meeting for lack of conflict, so. Councilmember Valdorama?
Yeah, I would suggest that we not have the meeting on the 12th. We have had on a number of occasions that we've had very early meetings, as early as eight or before, that have been set up. Now that we have our lobbyists, I would have hoped that they would also get us in before the rush of the AWC meetings. So on those occasions, we actually spent the night there on the 12th and then started early morning on the 13th. And while we don't have that schedule yet done to preclude a problem, we might as well just schedule it for the 11th, and that way we can make sure that we don't have that constraint on us.
I think we need to make sure that everyone's free on the 11th, so. Councilmember Ritchie?
I think I'm a little confused here, Larry. Are you talking about the Olympia Days of Action?
AWC is actually City Action Days, yes.
And that is similar or different from, I mean, you got Tacoma here, so I'm just clarifying that we're meeting in Tacoma, and then we're all driving down Olympia, or what's the deal with the lobbying days here?
I don't think, you, I'm sorry.
Totally separate.
Totally separate. So on the 13th, there's AWC Days.
Yes.
In Tacoma, and that's different.
Olympia. Isn't it in Olympia? It's not in Tacoma.
Well, that's what's listed on the manager's.
Okay, I don't think that's right. It's in Olympia, I'm looking at their schedule. No, it says all.
That's different from city lobbying days, where we would go down.
No, they're the same.
No, no, this is the same. AWC Action Days is where the cities are lobbying down with the legislators.
That's, I was thrown off by the Tacoma thing, thinking it was two separate things, so no problem. It's just this is, this is our lobbying day as a Smamish.
The 13th and 14th.
13th and 14th.
Yes.
And you're asking why not, you want to have a meeting on the 12th?
Yes.
If you want to hold a meeting on the 12th, if not, if that does not work with your schedules, if we could hold that on the 11th.
May I ask if we have a full agenda beyond Jeff's interim regs on the meeting on the 12th?
You have interim regs and you have, where did I lose it at? You have the Isquippine Lake Road Design. No, wait a minute. Excuse me, looking at for. I mean, I'm on the wrong, wrong one, excuse me. Oh, wait a minute, no, I don't want any of these.
Do we move it to the 11th?
Those two on the 12th.
The question is, do we move it to the 11th Monday? Or do we leave it at Tuesday, the 12th, recognizing that we're all going to be driving down, two and a half hours down south on.
Correct.
The following morning.
You have to get up at five in the morning.
I would think we would do it on the 11th personally. That's my opinion.
I hope I can get a babysitter. But yeah, I have, I don't, I have anything on the schedule, but yeah, hopefully I can be here.
So we'll schedule that for the 11th then?
We can move that to the 11th and I'll.
So no meeting on the 12th, and then Days of Action on the 13th?
Correct. And I, Mr. City Manager, I know that Debbie already has a few meetings with legislators scheduled. If you could maybe pass that information to the Legislative Committee, so that they're aware of those times, so that they know where to be. Because AWC Action Days, just so you all are aware, take place at the Red Lion Hotel down in Olympia, but obviously you will not be meeting with your legislators there, you will be meeting with them in their offices. So for whatever she's already got scheduled. I know Senator Monka Dingro, there is already something scheduled with her, which is good because she was not present for the meeting we had back here. We may not need to overlap since we had several of them back here, but.
We'll make sure we.
There's already one scheduled with her.
Over the Christmas break, I was able to complete my dissertation with a lot of help from my friends, and you received a copy of that. As you will see, you have a lot that's circling on your plate and needs to come through this body for some action. We've chatted about this in terms of trying to gain a little bit more focus for our work plan next year, so what I would like to suggest to you is that we do get together to talk through these particular issues, and I would like to suggest any of the following dates. Looking first at either Friday, the 1st.
Is that February 1st?
February.
Okay.
Sooner the better. Thursday, the 7th, or Friday, the 8th. And if those don't work, we could look at either Saturday, the 2nd, or Saturday, the 9th. Preferably we could get together on a Friday.
Friday.
Friday, the 1st.
1st works for me right now.
What timeframe are you looking at for that?
1st looks good.
Open for me.
Okay.
It gives us a little time to, there's still some work we'll need to do to get ready to, so we can facilitate that for you.
Is it all day?
I would plan on, that will depend a lot on you, whether we can get done quicker.
So I.
If I may?
We'll be in the city.
Are we taking, are we just opening the floor here?
Yeah, I'll go by lights, yes, so.
This'll work well.
Councilmember Ritchie, you have the floor.
In fact, actually, if, what I, again, I always prefer to hold these within the city. It saves a lot of controversy, as well as anybody wants to sit through, they can. I would also suggest to you, we can either set it up in this room, but ideally it'd be better to hold it in the conference room in the back. Again, I think it's a more comfortable setting for you to sit down that long period of time and talk with one another, but I'll work on that, and again, I can work either scenario there for you.
Okay. Councilmember Ritchie?
Two things. One, I would love it to be on a weekend. I work schedule-wise, a full-day event like that is going to be difficult, challenging for me personally, schedule-wise, to attend an all-day event like that. I would love it if it was Saturday, the 2nd of February, and additionally, because of that, it's Groundhog Day. And given our year this past year, I think it'd be fun to kind of celebrate Groundhog Day, so we can, you know, relive all the fun, right? So I would love it if it was a weekend day, and I think it's important that we do have a retreat to try to get our priorities straight and to, frankly, to take the time to go over your dissertation, Larry. I mean, I think that the issues you brought forward are definitely worthy of an all-day event, and I think, frankly, I think it's going to take more time than, than a half-day and maybe lesser attendance. I would like to commit more time to it than a workday personally, so that, that's my ask, that it's a work, a weekend. I would give up a Saturday for that, for sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Hornish?
Finally, something Jason and I agree on. I would prefer the weekend as well because of the work schedule.
I can't. I, Saturdays are going to be incredibly hard for me, and the 2nd is completely out, my husband's out of town. So I, it's going to be tough on, at least the 2nd is.
Does the 9th work?
Oh, that's a true Friday night, Saturday night.
That's, Saturday is the night.
No, but being split up between the, both two days.
It's whatever works for you, I'll make it work, so.
Yeah, if you do a Friday evening.
Incredibly hard unless it's in the afternoon. There's, it is, Saturdays are ugly right now.
Costco's packed.
Yeah, I will not be going to Costco. I can.
Yeah, not Sunday gets to be ugly.
I can try and see, but I can't commit to it right now, looking at Saturday, February 9th. And February 2nd, my husband's out of town.
May I make a suggestion, please?
That's the night to Columbus breakfast.
Given the time constraints that we have, does it make sense for those of us that can attend one day and attend that day, and then those of us that can attend another day, attend that day? Try and split it up?
I don't know.
That's hard on staff, and the weekends are hard on staff, too.
All together.
It's actually, it's not good as a group, as you will see, and I've given you a lot of food for thought there, that you may or may not agree with. In fact, some will agree and some will disagree, I know. You need to really sort through this and see if there is, at least I need to kind of feel if there's a consensus to put together some goals and objectives for you that you could say, yeah, we agree with that, because that will be the focus of the work plan, and from that, we would take it and put that on a council calendar, so you'll have a better idea of what may be coming at you. Again, you got to have some flexibility in that, because it could change. Hopefully, too, we'll have a lot of this stuff on the ground and up and being worked on, so your new manager won't have as hard a time getting their feet on the ground as I had here.
Larry, I don't disagree with you at all. I agree with you 100%. The question is, do we, do we, are we able to find a date where we can all get there between now and, you know, the 2nd coming?
Can we do it by email for some of these dates? Because it doesn't look like we're going to get a consensus here.
Yeah, it's, there's no way I can figure out if I can make that, that 9th work. And that would be, I mean, there's no way I can do it on the 1st or 2nd, just based on work. But I can try and see if I can find help for that Saturday, the 9th.
Councilor Ross has a.
Yes, Councilmember Ross.
How do we do a couple weeknights, 5 to 9? That, where you, that's lightweight, 9 o'clock for us, 5 to 9.
Whatever works.
That way we can accommodate those that are working during the day, at the same time accommodate those that have a lot of family activities and so on.
I would prefer that if we're going to do it, we power through it, and if we have to split it up, we split it between a half a Saturday and a half a weekday, just because, I mean, after working an entire day, you know, doing multiple evenings, and I appreciate that Christie can't do it because she has family commitments, and if I have to be here four nights a week, then I never see my family. And so if we're going to do it because of family, then let's balance this.
So if, to take what you just said, Christie, is there a part of Saturday that has four hours sweet spot?
So, I mean, the afternoon is much better. I just, it's hard to really commit unless I know I can get help in, on that Saturday. The only, the reason that the 2nd, my husband's gone, the 1st and 2nd, so there's no way.
What about the 9th?
That's what I need to go and figure out, but it's really hard, I can't figure it out.
Let's, let's see if Christie can make the 9th work as a whole day, because it sounds like weekends work better for many people, so let's give Christie a chance to see if she can make the 9th work. How about we try that?
Chris's idea.
And then if not, we'll try to split it between a weeknight and a half a Saturday. How about that?
I'll do my best to see what I can do.
And let me know, and I can let everyone know if the 9th worked, if not, we'll work a different scenario. Also, too, in case you haven't checked your email, I sent you an updated copy of that dissertation, because I missed a number by a zero.
What's a zero mean?
Two Z's.
Which was significant. Also, just want to announce that we, our new communication manager, Sharon Gavin, will begin on the 16th, and our human resource director, Linnea Jabalonsky, will start on the 1st of February, so. That's all I have this evening.
Okay. So it looks like we have an executive session?
We do.
Okay. So we have an executive session for potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I. How much time do we think we'll need?
10 minutes.
10 minutes, okay.
Christie, you have that, Christie, you have that list?
This one? A picture of it before you run off with it, since I wrote them all on there?
Let me, let me go first. I wanted to inform the council that I have received a complaint about possible illegal dumping. I am going to engage a firm, law firm, to look into this matter and get the facts of the matter and I'll bring that back to you unless you have an objection with me taking that action.
One caveat is timing. When can we expect a report back? Do you think? I mean, I don't know what's reasonable frankly.
Till I talk to the firm and kind of get a gist of what their abilities and timeframes are, I don't know. But as soon as I get that, I'll give you a timeframe when we'll have that back.
I would suggest we try to target by the end of March. That's almost three months from now.
Oh, I would hope we would be done by then. I don't think it is, will involve that much time if they can get started on, on the issue.
Can input into who the firm may be?
I don't know yet.
I think she's asking if she can get, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Can we give you some input into the who?
Sure, yeah, please. If you have some names, send that to me.
Great.
Does someone have a motion?
I do.
Councilmember Ross.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute a settlement agreement in a form acceptable to the city attorney with Huntington Homes LLC related to the properties at 850 and 867 212th Avenue Southeast to include, A, payment of a penalty in the amount of $124,500, B, removal of unhealthy trees and associated tree replacement pursuant to city code, and C, subsequent tree protection measures and landscape restoration pursuant to city code.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of seven zero, the motion has passed.
I move adjourn.
Wow. Who was that? Leave your pet frog at home.
That is why we must adjourn now.
It's been seconded. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of adjourning say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, by a vote of seven zero, we are adjourned.